Well, we once again thank you for another day in Ashland, Kentucky. We once again ask you to preside over this meeting of mayor and city commissioners. Give us wisdom and guidance as we strive to make the right decisions for our citizens' people. We ask your continued blessing and favor on our city manager, department heads, employees, and our citizens. Bless those that attend us today and be with us throughout this afternoon, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to receive filed agenda.
Second.
Any discussion on it? All favor?
Aye.
Posse like sign. Receive five minutes for our last meeting.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Posse like sign. Hearings reports.
Mayor, I just have a few remarks. I just want to welcome everybody to our new meeting and just want to remind you that one of our signature festivals is beginning to, starting up tomorrow with summer motion. And it's going to be six days, three days, first three days will be at Central Park and the last three will be on the riverfront. I think the city manager is going to speak to a few of these items that I'm talking about. We had a river trail built last Saturday, had over forty volunteers out. And I want to brag on him, he worked like a mule for probably six hours with a chainsaw. And it really, it started to take shape. Ryan Eastwood was there, Bill Ashland, Mayor Gilmore's daughter, and I mean, we just had a whole host of people out there. We're going to have another one coming up in July. And we spread chrome rubber and cleaned brush and put up fence, and it's really going to look nice. The recycling center opens today, it's open right now, an attendant will be there starting at three o'clock until it closes up, and we're going to see how that goes. I think it really looks nice down there, it really gives a good presentation. And while this is going on, we're, I encourage all our people, the recycling survey is going out in your water bills. And so, we've already got 500, over 500 responses online, and these paper questionnaires will be going out, and it'll be interesting to see about our curb side that we're looking into. Last but not least, I ran into Brian Felty up at the garage, and some weeks ago, we had taken a bus tour of all our city facilities, and one of the questions that was asked, would you be willing to partner with the Kentucky State Police in servicing their vehicles, their cruisers? And we came to an agreement, and that is starting out, it'll be a new source of revenue for us, and it'll be, it'll give this Kentucky State Police some security, knowing that there's going to be certified mechanics working on their vehicles. There's actually three cruisers there right now being worked on at the city garage. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Just to tack on one of the, well, two of those, I had my daughter stay with me go there because I was out of town. So, one of, somebody in my family had to be there. I'll be at the next one for sure. It does look great over there, the manager and I luckily, it's four of them, we went over through there Tuesday, I guess, and pretty muddy, but you can see all the work on the brush and trees on the riverfront that's opening up. It's going to be a neat, it's going to be a neat thing for our citizens. I'm looking forward to it, and as I think Commissioner Gooden mentioned in a paper, it'd be a great place to walk your dog also, it's just going to be. We're hoping at some point, put some kind of picnic facilities down there where maybe take a little bit of strain off Central Park and people could actually have their family reunions there, or small family or large family groups, but the more, the more you do on that riverfront, the more beautiful it looks, and you attract, you attract our citizens there, which is what it's all about. The other thing I want to say, tagging on you too, Commissioner Gooden, is that we worked for quite a while on, working with the state police, and it kind of just didn't go anywhere, and then we resurrected it basically pretty close to that time we made that tour. And the truth of it is, it's going to be a little source of revenue for us, but it's going to save us as taxpayers and all the taxpayers the Commonwealth really, because in talking to Captain Gibson or Commander Gibson, they would have a breakdown, and they had no particular place they could take. It's kind of hard to understand with a governmental agency that they couldn't have piggybacked with the state highway garage, somebody to do that, but they were, they moved around at different, and you know, some people think, well, private enterprise, give them a shot. Well, the problem was, they were paying exorbitant amounts of money to have the repairs done and could not get any timeframe of when they could get that vehicle back out. But he showed me some of the bills they'd gotten, and they were kind of like we get when we take our car to someplace to get it worked on, you just keep your fingers crossed when you go get it. But we have a, you know, we're not doing it for free, but we're doing it so far cheaper than he had been doing in the past, and they know their priorities, city vehicles are a priority, and he understands that, but I think it's a great partnership we have with the state police, and I'm glad we're doing it. I appreciate you mentioning it. Anyone else? Well, I want to say one thing, we started our demolition today, and some of you have been coming to a lot of meetings, and I've talked about Beet Street for a year and a half. I could have talked to you about it while I was superintendent of schools, because you pass it every day, and the trees started little saplings, now those trees come out of the driveway about that big round. I'm going to go out there soon if the meeting's over, because they're already starting to tear it down. We're becoming very aggressive now in taking down blighted properties. Every commission I've ever served on, Council Martin has been around for all of those, we try to do something like that throughout our community. And we have, we've evolved into having so many homes that are absentee owners, landlords, maybe they're empty, most of these were obviously tearing down now are empty, and they've been empty a long time. The one on Beet Street, I've come out the end of Branch Road, there it is. And it won't be much left. I'm very proud of the fact that we've all agreed to be aggressive on cleaning up properties in Ashland, and a lady called me this morning on around Eighth and Bath, that maybe February or March last year when I first took office, she called me, and I went down there to look at a house next door to her. No one lived in, a huge tree had fallen and torn half the porch off, filled the whole front yard up, you couldn't even get to the house, and she was hoping to sell her house. And as I went down that street, Ms. Perkins, Little Vatican area of Ashland, when I was going to be a holy family, almost everybody lived over there, were Catholics, and they obviously, most of them worked Armco or Ashed Oil, they took care of the property, they were very modest homes. So, I go down there to look at the property, and I'm so proud of those citizens down there because every one of the houses was neat as a pin, yards cut, fences, everything looked great except that one house. Now, it's taken me that long, well, now we've got the wheels oiled and we're really moving on it. I think we have nine homes approved to go down, four very quickly, and this one on Beet Street, I'm not telling you it's the worst in town, but it's the one I talk about the most, so Chris Pullman is not stupid. If I was talking about it every time we brought it up, so he texted me a minute ago, he wanted to know if I could get out there right away, he obviously forgot we had a meeting today. But we have so many people who take good care of the property, I get these calls almost every day in the mayor's office, can you do anything about these neighbors? Sometimes it's neighbors that have everything just torn up. Most of them are absent, anybody in them, and the people that own them, we ended, we end up, the actual demolition isn't expensive, it's sometimes the asbestos and checking on everything, and we take care of it and we put a lien against property. Sometimes it sells, some of these lots are forty footers, which used to be the minimum, and you cannot build on a forty foot lot anymore, so what we normally do is, and I'm not getting ahead of game there, but we normally would turn half that property over, we would change the deed on that property that each homeowner lived next door, which they might be able to put a driveway, a garage, or whatever the case may be. The big thing is, they take care of that piece of property, and it stays on tax rolls and so forth. So, it, I mean, I've talked a lot about it, it's exciting, it's a point where we can start doing this, the courts understand, and you have to have, it's American, and I fully support, you can't just go easily and tear somebody's house down, but so many of these, nobody cares what you do with it, you know, and they've got tax bills on them, they're not going to take care of them. So, at least we're all going to be aggressive in trying to clean up places in Ashland that we can, and take care of neighborhoods that everybody else is trying to do the right thing, and then you have that house there. So, I'm excited about that, that's important. Okay. Anything else? Nobody else?
Okay. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Just sort of.
We have a bunch.
Couple issues, I did want to expound on a couple of things. Coincidentally, Chris Pullman today is up at Kentucky League of Cities, they're having a two-day conference on blighted abandonment dilapidated properties, so he's at that Also, on the properties that are coming down, Beet Street is coming down over the next couple of days, there are three that are pending that will come down in the next two weeks, we've got a ten-day waiting period with EPA, two additional properties, the owners agreed to either tear them down and make them code compliant within the next ninety days, and then nine more structures are out for title search, and we'll let that process go through to come to the same conclusion on those. On the KSB and the vehicles, Brian's doing a magnificent job down there, because of his leadership, we do have additional capacity, we're able to take care of those vehicles, and I do want to emphasize, it doesn't come at the expense of the city vehicles or the priority of those. To echo what Commissioner Gooden said on the riverfront trail, again, fantastic effort. If you've been down there, just look at what those forty folks did in that period of time, it's pretty impressive. Know that's not the final product, it's still rough, the rain really slowed us down quite a bit, I'm doing some of the other work, but the next session is the fourteenth of July at seven thirty. If you can come out for an hour, that's great, if you can come out for the whole time, that's great, but like the mayor said, when you start getting a view of the river and with all that scrub taken down, it's pretty magnificent. Also, to echo something from Commissioner Gooden on the recycle center, we will lock it up tonight after it closes at seven o'clock, so Thursdays and Fridays, three to seven, Saturday, eight to four. We realize that's going to be a challenge, it's going to be a change in some people's routine. I respectfully request that people don't dump, even if it's recycled, they don't dump it outside of that facility, because technically it is criminal littering. Ashland Police Department's going to be out there with some very aggressive enforcement. We are trying to get away, just last week, you know, somebody else inside the fence line dumped a couch, we need to get away from that, because it's really costing us resources down, our city solid waste folks that go down there and clean that up. So, again, we know it's a change, this whole, the whole thing is set up to be adaptable, so if we see that we need to have expanded hours, we're going to be able to track how much gets taken out of there every week, the two pickups, we'll have a lot of good data to make decisions on. With an iron curb side recycling, we have had over 500 respondents electronically so far, we've had about fifty paper, that's paper respondents, that's open until the end of the month, that'll give some good data for the mayor and the commissioners to look at. Two other issues, or one other issue actually, Twenty-Ninth Street update. City of Ashland and contractors that are responsible for the CSO project have identified, we've collectively identified some paving deficiencies on Twenty-Ninth Street. To that end, we are going to mill and put down new pavement on Twenty-Ninth, on a large portion of Twenty-Ninth Street from Lexington Avenue to the Belmont section, intersection, to correct these deficiencies. I want to emphasize, this is not an increased cost to the city, the timeline for completion is still mid-July. This, when we come through and we do the final pavement, this is going to cover everything, Belmont, Geiger, Simpson, Powell, and Lookout is not going to shut down Twenty-Ninth Street, but there may be some one-way traffic. So, the bottom line is that there were some areas that we and the contractor weren't satisfied with collectively, we're going to make sure that those get corrected so the taxpayers get what we paid for on Twenty-Ninth Street. Mayor, commissioners, that's all I have.
Okay.
There's also, for the community to note, thirty punch list items that our engineering techs and engineering department have determined with.
Yeah, we have two pages of punch list items, and we've got a man on the job, Brady Dolls, who works for us, and he's up there, all ours, and anybody's there. I've met with the contractor a couple of times, we met this week up on the site, and just let me assure you that I deal with it like it's mine. And I usually ask him, you put a driveway in and it looked like that, would you pay the guy to do it? We had him back here, he could, there was no argument. And we all had to stand up for our citizens and all that, but we have a big storm, water was pooling, brand-new paving job, we're putting new down for drains in, that's what the job is, to minimize the overflow, and we can't, weren't getting the water up the road, for God's sake, so we, they're going to mill, you know, and get the slope right, get it going to our drains, and if it doesn't do it, they'll have to do it again. We'll hold it, we are making a payment today, but we're, I think we're holding back about half a million dollars, so it's going to be done right, or we're not going to write any checks, so you can rest assured on that. I think I, the commissioners feel exactly the same way. Okay. If nothing else, we're at a point in our meeting for public participation, where items not on the agenda, and if you have something you'd like to bring before the commission, I ask you to come out and give your name and address, and try to limit your comments to five minutes or less. Yes, sir. Counsel, please step forward.
Thank you, honor.
You are?
I am John McGinnis, from Greed, Kentucky. Attorney, rare McGinnis Leslie Kirkland, I'll get a plug in, I'm here. And I'm here representing WB Hospitality, that's my law partner, Bruce Leslie's client, and he's tied up today, so I'm standing in for him.
And that client has to be our new hotel.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's the hotel. I have copies of an application, may I pass those out?
Counsel, we'll give it.
If you could flip over to the third page, we have an explanation of what this is about. What WB Hospitality wants to do is to extend the canopy over the alleyway, it would be in the back of the hotel, we're facing Greed Avenue, and the canopy would be about twenty feet out, thirty, approximately thirty feet length, the alleyway, I believe, is fifteen third, fifteen and a half feet wide. And the purpose of it is to protect guests from the elements, you know, when you get out of your car, you'll have, it's raining, and you can walk in the hotel. There will not be any support footings put onto the city's property. In other words, it will all be anchored to the building, and as you can see, I believe we have an addition in the application that shows what it will look like, and it's on like fourth page. Anyway, it will be very attractive, the, Mary Ann has to approve it, so that will win with the design, but we need your permission to encroach into the city's airspace, actually, is what it is. And it will be high enough, I believe the city engineer is talking about thirteen and a half feet, maybe higher.
Thirteen and a half.
Yeah, thirteen and a half. So, you know, it will comply with that, and we need the commission's permission.
Sure. What's a good addition there? And I think it would look great, I'm sure we're all happy about that, we want, we want what they're doing, and I know Andy and Jimmy both, and then you know what the hotel chain is expecting it to look like, the very best they possibly have, so I think that's good information on that. Rather than have you wait, I would ask to move on that item now.
I think the motion would read the request.
Okay, that is, that is.
It's to prepare a limited use of right-of-way agreement.
So, that you don't have to wait for it to end, when it's on there is a discussion. So.
I second that motion.
Thank you. We'll have it drawn up and then approved, and you'll approach it next to me. Would you like to add anything? All favor?
Aye.
Posse like sign.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Counsel.
And may I now be excused?
You may.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Now, some of you would just assume you left center, you know that. Let me run a little bit. I won't say more about that.
I hope not.
Sense it to the people. Anyone else? Black, pure force. Thank y'all for being here, we appreciate it. Old business, out of mayor.
First reading on June twenty-fifth, ordered city of Ashland, Kentucky fixing the abhorrent tax coven for the year 2018, payable in the year 2018 on real estate, personal property, and franchises in the city for city revenue purposes, providing a discount of one percent on abhorrent taxes only which are paid on or before the fifteenth date following the bill date, and providing for a penalty of ten percent and six percent interest per annum any taxes which are paid after the due date, said due date being thirty days following the bill date.
So, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Posse like sign. Out of B.
First reading, June twenty-fifth, ordered city of Ashland, Kentucky approving renewal of medical benefits Administrators Inc. for administrative fees to administer the city's health insurance coverage, Section 125 cafeteria plan, health reimbursement arrangement, dental insurance, and stop-loss coverage through companion life for plan year July one, two thousand eighteen, through June thirty, two thousand nineteen.
So, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Posse like sign. Out of C.
First reading on June twenty-fifth, ordered city of Ashland, Kentucky amending Section two, ordinance seventy, series seventeen, previously amended by ordinance one oh five, series seventeen, ordinance fourteen, series eighteen, commonly known and referred to as a budget ordinance of the city.
So, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Posse like sign. Out of D.
First reading, June fourteenth, ordered city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor, executing agreement with Community Assistance Referral Service, Inc., sub-recipient of thirty-one thousand six hundred dollars from the two thousand eighteen program year of community development block grant.
So, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
I recuse myself. Posse like sign. Out of E.
First reading on June fourteenth, ordered city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor, executing agreement with Floyd County Council on Aging, Inc., Ashland Senior Center, sub-recipient of fourteen thousand dollars from the two thousand eighteen program year community development block grant.
So, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
I recuse myself. Posse like sign. Out of M.
First reading on June fourteenth, ordered city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Hillcrest Bruce Mission, sub-recipient of eighteen thousand dollars from the two thousand eighteen program year community development block grant.
So, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
I recuse myself. Posse like sign. Out of G.
First reading on June fourteenth, ordered city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Ashland Child Development Center, and sub-recipient of seven thousand dollars from the two thousand eighteen program year community development block grant.
So, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Posse like sign.
I recuse myself.
Out of H.
First reading, June fourteenth, ordered city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor, executing agreement with Shelter of Hopey, sub-recipient of five thousand dollars from the two thousand eighteen program year community development block grant.
So, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Posse like sign.
I recuse myself.
Out of I.
First reading on June fourteenth, ordered city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Ashland Community Kitchen, Inc., the sub-recipient of five thousand dollars from the two thousand eighteen program year community development block grant.
So, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Posse like sign.
I recuse myself.
Out of J.
First reading on June twenty-fifth, ordered city of Ashland, Kentucky approving loan two thousand eighteen dash ED zero zero one to Almaz Italian LLC in the amount of fifty thousand dollars from the Economic Development and Civic Loan Fund.
So, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Posse like sign. Out of K.
First reading, June twenty-fifth, ordered city of Ashland, Kentucky approving loan number two eighteen ED oh oh two, the bird dog of Tri-State, DBA Advanaclean of the Tri-State, in the amount of fifty thousand dollars from the Economic Development and Civic Loan Program. I'm sorry.
So, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Posse like sign.
I recuse myself.
Out of L.
First reading on June twenty-fifth, ordered city of Ashland, Kentucky approving loan number two thousand eighteen ED zero zero three, Crossover Ventures, Inc., in the amount of fifty thousand dollars from the Economic Development and Civic Loan Program.
So, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Posse like sign. Out of M.
First reading, June twenty-fifth, ordered city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City and Peoples Insurance Agency LLC to provide insurance and/or risk management support service from July one, two thousand eighteen, to June thirty, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
So, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Posse like sign. Out of N.
First reading on June twenty-fifth, ordered city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute a trust participation agreement in Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services General Insurance Trust for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
So, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Posse like sign. Any other old business?
No, sir.
Consent agenda.
Resolution, city of Ashland, Kentucky adopting, authorizing, and approving course of action presented by the city manager on items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting board of city commissioners, June twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen.
So, any questions or discussion on consent agenda?
Aye.
Posse like sign.
I want to recuse myself from the consent agenda.
New business, out of A.
Ordered city of Ashland, Kentucky adopting the city of Ashland Title VI Program Civil Rights Assurance, per the Federal Transit Administration, requirements for the action bus system, specifically repealing ordinance eighty-nine, series two thousand nine, ordinance eighty-nine, series two thousand fourteen.
So, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Posse like sign. Out of B.
Ordered city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute an engineering service contract between the city and M S E of Kentucky, Inc., now not to exceed
service contract between the city and S M S E of Kentucky, Inc., bound not to exceed seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollars for their proposal to provide engineering services for the Ashland Water Booster Pump Station for East Park Regional Business Park for the city engineering capital development director.
Salute.
Second.
And of course, this is totally related to our potentiality of providing for radio industries.
Off the station, Mark, it's for.
All favor? Oppose the white sign. Out of C.
Ordered City of Ashland, Kentucky prohibiting parking on the east side of Ballard Street between Cactus and Logan Streets, both sides of Hudson Street and Logan Street, two hundred feet northbound, providing a penalty for violation of the ordinance.
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor? Oppose the white sign. Out of D.
Ordered City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing the city manager enter into short-term rentals, parking spaces on the city-owned municipal parking lot located on Greenwich Avenue between Fifteen and Sixteen Streets.
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick explanation as to what this would possibly be for the public.
Thank you, Commissioner. Basically, every time we get a request for the short-term rentals, it's an ordinance that is required to be published. And so the staff, they made the connection that, hey, every time we're doing this, it's about six hundred dollar worth of advertisement for the city manager to manage that. It's pretty benign and we're going to save ourselves a little bit of money on that.
All favor? Oppose the white sign. Out of E.
Ordered City of Ashland, Kentucky adopting job description for the position crew leader Department of Finance Division of Ashland Bus System, eliminating position financial administrative assistant at Department of Finance, adopting revised job description for the position programs and grant specialists in the Department of Community and Economic Development, adopting the revised authorized position listing to reflect these changes and adopting the revised salary chart for the policies and procedures, compensation plan, classification plan, as adopted ordinance fifty-one, series seventeen, as previously mentioned.
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor? Oppose the white sign. We already take care of that. Any other new business?
No, sir.
Motion to go executive session to discuss personnel, man or only.
Individual.
Individual. No action to be taken.
Second.
We come back out, we will not be doing it for the business and we will not vote back there. We could vote out here. Anyway, that's only out left before you go or wait on it. We will be recessing this meeting so you know, we only meet once in July. And our regular meeting in July is the twenty-sixth. But we're going to have, recess this meeting to July nineteenth at one thirty because we've got.
We want to meet tomorrow and put the new pay scale in effect so that it goes into effect July one, so we don't have to do back pays when it goes into effect with the second reading in late July. Just the one thing that we, the item we just wrapped.
In the morning?
Yes, sir.
Then everybody be in the morning?
It'd be at five minute or less.
Nine, nine-thirty, wait, what's that?
And then we can recess again to the nineteenth.
Okay. We'll recess till tomorrow morning at nine o'clock for that one item and then we'll recess to the nineteenth to have the League of Cities.
Mission, Michigan, Vegas, work session.
Mission. Session.
I'm glad we only have one meeting in July because we're at five.
Okay, we're, we will be going executive session and we'll recess. Thank y'all for being here. Okay. Clerk, we'll, we retard it ten till one. All legal personnel is discussed, no actions taken, we have a motion on court.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we continue Mr. Kevin Sinnett in the position of assistant city attorney on a temporary, part-time, month-to-month basis at the salary adopted in the new position and that the position be advertised.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor? Oppose the white sign. Thank you, Commissioner. We're staying in recess till nine o'clock tomorrow morning for one item and we'll recess that one to the nineteenth.